One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Perry?
Present.
Councilor Cook? Councilor Janik?
Present.
Councilor Edwards?
Here.
Councilor DiMediris?
Yeah.
Councilor Burke?
Yeah.
Councilor Viera is absent.
Consent agenda, approval of town council minutes, September 12th, 2022, regular meeting, Councilor Burke abstains, absent. September 12th, 2022, executive session, Councilor Burke abstains, absent. September 28th, 2022, regular meeting, Council Viera abstains, absent. September 28th, 2022, executive session, Council Viera abstains, absent. Acknowledgement, we see the minutes from boards, commissions and committees, Economic Development Commission I, acknowledge receipts of reports, town administrator, departments, monthly reports, September 2022, town administrator, police and fire department, overtime reports, September 2022, approval of tax assessors, abatements, $1,465.92. Would any of the council like to take anything from the consent agenda? Wow, a first. That's a first. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do you have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Public comments regarding the council agenda are the town business. Renee Jones? Hi Renee.
Hello.
Just state your address and your name.
16, Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road. I just wanted to update you on what was happening with the EDC. After your last meeting, we talked about the workshop that we were going to have, so I just wanted to tell you what we did because it, so it was posted on the town website, we sent out two email blasts to our business list, we walked around town with 15 posters and businesses in town, we went to the Four Corners, the Business Association, and spoke to them at that meeting. But at this point, we have only had had five responses from the businesses. So I was really depressed by this at first, and then I realized that I had heard that the Greater Newport Chamber of Commerce had also tried to do something with their nine businesses, nine cities and villages and towns, and they had gotten only 50 responses. So it kind of put things into perspective for me, but I just wanted to update you on that because what we're planning on doing is actually, we'll have a meeting Thursday night, we're going to put another blast out, and we're hoping that maybe we can get a few more people. The problem is that we had these guest speakers that were lined up, and I don't know how comfortable they're going to be feeling if there's only like five to eight people. So I just wanted to update you on that, and that's basically it.
Is there anything we can do to help you promote this?
If you know of any businesses that would be, you know, if you know of any businesses that might be interested, I'm coming here because I thought maybe if I'm on TV, somebody will.
Live.
Live, from New York, that they might actually see the business, you know, and come. So that's, that's actually why I came.
You have it on our website?
You do have it on your website.
So, to be live, can you give a two-minute explanation again for those who are watching?
For the people that are watching. What we're trying to do is put together a workshop for all the Tiverton businesses. What we're planning on doing is having coffee and muffins on October 18th, from 8 o'clock to 10 o'clock.
In the morning.
In the morning. And it will be at the Tiverton Yacht Club, 58 Riverside Drive. And what we're, what we would want to do, what we were wanting to do, and have contacted people from Rhode Island Commerce, SBA, and any number of different state agencies that all have programs for businesses. These programs are free, anything from how to get a loan to how to get equipment, and we're hoping that, you know, we were hoping to just get the agencies down here so that people would know what they had available to them and resources that they had available to them. So that's what the whole goal of this meeting was. And like I said, if it's, I'm getting the feeling that it's not, it wasn't just us, because I know that something happened, you know, what happened with Chamber of Commerce, and there was another group that was trying to do something. And I'm wondering if it's just businesses are just feeling like they're just coming out of things and don't want to take anything on right now, but we haven't given up hope. If it doesn't work this time, we will probably try to do it again in the new year. So.
Can I do a social work thing and reframe that?
Sure.
It's not that it won't work, it will work with who you have there, and you'll do the best with folks who are there and grow from there.
And it's going to be such a great event that everyone's going to talk about it the next time you have it.
We hope so, because I'm hoping, it really clearly depends on the people that we invited. If, if it's up to them if they want to, if they choose to come or not, but we hope that we continue, I mean, just by having done this, it's, I look at it as, you know, it's one more time that we got the EDC's name out, and one more time that people in town have seen it. So we're just sort of building on what we're doing. And that's it.
Thank you. And like I said two weeks ago, I think your community is doing a great job, and this is a good effort.
And I'm going to put in a plug for the farmer's market.
I was there this week, and I bought some good doggy cookies.
Oh, wait, October 16th, the one at Pardon Gray is going to knock your socks off. So everybody, please come to the farmer's market. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee. Next one is Barbara. Hello.
Can we sit down, stand up?
Do anything you'd like, Bob.
I'll just stand up.
Okay. I just need you to state your address, of course, and your name.
313 Neck Road. I'm talking, I'm going to make some comments about the short-term rental ordinance, which is on the agenda, and I'd like to read comments that I made at the planning board on the 4th. I have studied the STR ordinance of more than five Rhode Island communities and compared them to Tiverton's draft STR ordinance. It is possible to have an STR ordinance by registry instead of by zoning with a special use permit. Three Rhode Island communities, Westerly, Middletown, and Portsmouth, have an STR ordinance by registry instead of with a special use permit. The advantage of doing it this way, an STR ordinance, is that it avoids putting a special use of commercial designation on the STR property. That special use goes with the land in perpetuity, thereby creating islands of commercial, commercial islands in residential zones that lasts after the current owner sells the property. Warren and Jamestown also are going to be doing it this way. Warren has a draft, and Jamestown is currently writing a draft. Tiverton's STR ordinance compared with other ordinances is lacking in the following areas. One, it lacks concise definitions for bedroom, local representative, registrar. Two, in occupancy, it lacks proper occupancy numbers that reflect the number of bedrooms which are allowed by an onsite wastewater treatment system. The ordinance currently states that occupancy shall be limited to 150% of the sleeping capacity. It should read something like this. The maximum occupancy for the dwelling unit shall be two persons per bedroom. The number of bedrooms shall not exceed the number of bedrooms supported by the design load of the property's septic system. Three, parking. It lacks clear parking restrictions that reflect the off-street parking spaces required for STRs. Currently, the ordinance states or refers to Article 10, Section 1. So Article 10 is special provisions, Section 1 is parking regulations. It refers, under required parking for residents, one and a half car spaces for each dwelling unit in residential zones must be met with off-street parking. It should state something like this. One off-street parking space for each bedroom shall be provided on the same lot on which the short-term rental is located. Five, designation of responsible person or local representative. The ordinance currently states, the owner of the STR must designate an individual residing or property management company operating within 25 miles of short-term rental. I did some measurements in North Tiverton that would take you to Providence or Taunton. 25 miles is too far a distance to respond quickly in case of an emergency at the STR. Warren's draft STR says, a local representative or manager must reside in Warren. Six, under Section 8 nuisances, there's a reference to 7D in this section, which is incorrect, there's no 7D. Under inspections, there is no mention that the building official and the fire marshal should inspect STRs. Portsmouth ordinance says, at the time of registration, an STR should be inspected by the building official and the fire marshal to determine the occupancy limit and to determine if smoke and CO detectors are installed in compliance with the state fire code for dwelling units, and to determine the number of off-street parking spaces. Eight, there should be a section that details occupancy limits and parking requirements. And nine, there should be a section that says, no special event permit or sound variance permit shall be granted to STRs. I, I believe the ordinance needs far more careful work. This is to protect the town and its citizens, and I don't believe that it's ready. I know that the, I don't think that the planning board did either, because they had a unanimous vote to send to the planning board a communication that they could not make positive findings because there appear to be too many inconsistencies with the comp plan and the purposes of zoning.
Thank you, Barbara. You do realize that this is a template right now, and this is going to go to, we are going to have a public hearing on it. So, like all draft ordinances, it can be changed, and that's why we hear from the public. And I think your suggestions were good, and thank you. If we could, could we have a copy of that? Could we make a copy of that, you think?
You can have it.
Perfect.
I also have a copy of all of the areas of the comp plan and the purpose of the zoning where it does not apply.
Perfect. I did talk to the planning office before I made this agenda, and yes, the planning board did send references, but sent their recommendations, but it wasn't ready for this meeting. So, all this agenda item is to go out for advertisement, and then we'll have our public hearing, hear from the public, and then decide from that point where we want to go with this. But I want to thank Mike Marcello and Mike Burke, because it was very stagnant at some point with all kinds of ideas, and they did offer to get together, do like, which I call a template, with all the ideas that were suggested. And then from there, it can be tweaked. So it's nothing permanent at this point. And I think they'll agree with me, and that's why we do the public hearing, to hear what people have to say.
Thank you for all of that. That's really informative.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. So where'd that copy go?
It's right here in front of you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you make copies of that for us?
Yeah, I'm going to give it to Joan, and she can distribute it to everybody.
Just one question for Mike. Is it accurate that we can do this outside of zoning? Because that's what we base this on.
I don't believe, so when you say registration, to me, that means licensing, and I, we did research this, as you know, and, and, the law is clear that you cannot, unless there's a statutory authority to license, you don't have, cities and towns don't have the authority to do so. So I, I make registration akin to a license, and I think if challenged, I think those other communities may have trouble. So as I indicated to you when we looked at this, and the council also asked me to look into licenses, when you look at all the licenses that are granted by the town, I can refer you back to a specific state statute that gives you that authority to make that license, like for a dog license, a yard sale license, a peddler's license, a mobile food establishment license. There's a statute that says, city and towns, yes, you have the authority to license in this manner. There is no such authority in state law anywhere that gives cities and towns the authority to license short-term rentals, yet. I mean, it could happen in the future, but right now it doesn't. And that's why the majority of city towns are really kind of stuck by using the zoning code, which is the best way to control land use. So, that's the only way we can control land use. So, that's why it was drafted as it was.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? 6A, approval of the proposed amendment to Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Open Burning. This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open this to the public. Does anyone have any comment about this subject? Anyone have any comment? Final call. Anyone have any comment? I'd like to close the public hearing. Who would like to present this? Donna, do you want to? This was Councilor Cook's.
Thank you, Denise. I was kind of on my own with this. All I had was what we had worked on before, but I did a lot of homework yesterday, and there was a few things that I wanted to add. One of them was under Section 4232, if you see on the first, first page here. I wanted to add a Section 42, it's XX, because I'm not sure how the, how the numbers will work out. Burn barrel. No person shall use or maintain a burn barrel in the town of Tiverton. I have one in the yard next to me. Another one is, would be Section 4234, which is bonfires and other ceremonial fires. Only clean brush and untreated wood may be burned. Large logs and tree stumps over eight inches in diameter should not be allowed to be burned. Any open fire larger than 36 by 36 by 36 shall be deemed a bonfire and subject to this code.
Where is that, Donna? Where are you putting that?
I'm adding it. It would be under 3240, 4234, bonfires and other ceremonial fires, which is still on the same page, first page.
So who's going to, so if the fire department arrives and it's larger than 36 by 36?
Yeah, this was in another, I don't know if it was Portsmouth or Newport. I checked a couple of them, and I, I kind of thought that was kind of important to have exact structure.
36 by 36 by 36, high?
36 by 36. So that's three feet by three feet by three feet. And that wouldn't be about four yard fire.
Yeah, she's talking bonfire, ceremonial fires.
So this is a bonfire, like suppose the town had?
Anything, anything larger would be deemed a bonfire. Anything beyond this.
Okay, because I was thinking we have bonfires as a town.
Yeah, it would have to be bigger than.
So it'd have to be licensed.
Three feet, three feet.
Can you read the language again? Can you read that again, the language?
Oh, sure. I'll give this to you.
Okay.
Okay. The other one is under liability 4240, 4242. It's just so that you know where I'm reading, where we are. I would like to add Section 42XX, under liability. Okay, here we go. Okay. I wanted to add, I noticed that there's no form of enforcement to any of this, and I thought maybe we, we should have something, because the two ordinance I was looking at do have some type of enforcement where people have to listen to the fire.
So it's fines?
Yeah. We don't have any of that. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
There's a fine.
Are there?
Yeah, penalty. It's the first section, 42-31. Penalty for violation of this article will be prescribed in Section 1.7. So Mike.
What do, what do they say, Mike? Because I, I didn't find it.
It's the first, it's the first.
It's the first section, 42-31, in this ordinance.
Well, we don't have that.
It doesn't say what.
We don't have that there. Well, we have penalty for violation, this article would have been, but we don't have a.
It's a tired article.
Okay. I tried to find it, I couldn't.
Okay.
Can you find it? Because I couldn't find it.
Find what?
Where it said, what the fine would be in that.
Oh, what the actual penalty will.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Oh, 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 yeah. Don't, because you took all the.
Because I, I couldn't find it.
You guys took all the fines out and put it in a separate ordinance, so.
That's right, okay.
Fines and fines are a different ordinance.
That's what I was trying to say, though. I don't know what I would say.
All right. So, add enforcement and penalties. The fire chief or any authorized officer, agent, employee, or representative of the town of Tiverton who presents credentials may inspect any property for the purpose of ascertaining compliance with the provisions of this section. The penalty for violation of any portion of this section shall be forfeiture or not less than $25 or more than $500 plus the cost of prosecution. Penalties are doubled for second and subsequent offenses, or, this was, that was in one ordinance, this was in another. Any person convicted of a violation of this chapter shall be subject to a fine as outlined below. A, first offense, a fine of $100 or 10 days in jail or both. B, any offense thereafter, up to a fine of $500 or 10 days in jail or both. This is, you know, pick something or have something to it.
Yeah, I think the jail is a little bit too much for people who are burning leaves in the backyard.
So, the next one would be Section 4243, under it would be 42XX, add obedience to orders at scene of fire. Shall be subject and obedient to the orders of firemen and police officers in all matters relating to extinguishing the fire, removal and protection of persons and property endangered by fire, smoke or water, freedom of fire department and medical personnel and equipment to perform their duties or to function properly, and the maintenance and order at or near the scene of the fire. And it shall be unlawful for any person to disobey any such order of a fireman or police officer. Firemen and police officers shall have the authority to arrest persons who disobey such orders and to hold them in custody until fire has been extinguished, at which time the violator shall be dealt with according to the law. The other, the other thing that I, I just don't know what the, the background is on it. If you look at recreational fires, permit except for March 15th to May 15th, I don't know why those particular timeframe was picked, or why.
That's current law, right? That's not a change. That's the current law.
That's the current law.
That's not a change.
Of the state?
No, no, our town.
No, 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 I know, but I'm just wondering why.
Yeah, but we met with the fire chief, we talked about that, we, no one had an idea, so.
He never got back to me.
Who?
The acting fire chief.
I mean, there was nothing to, we never really knew.
No.
I can't tell you why the dates of that.
Oh, no.
He questioned, he questioned if that was, if they were good dates or not. I remember him saying that. But what would be a better date? I mean.
Yeah, what dates do you say?
For recreational.
So it's March 15th to May 15th, when you have to have a permit.
March 15th to May.
And between certain hours, between 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
I don't understand why.
That was before me.
Probably the highest fire season runs dry, right?
I was going to say, that's because that's high brush season.
Right.
Okay.
So that's why they do that.
Okay, that's, I just didn't know.
But, but Joe, if that's a high brush season, just help me out. Without, without a permit, except for between those two dates, between the hours of 10:00 and 5:00, why would you limit the hours for the permit? So I could have, on, on March 20th, I can have, I can't have it from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but at 5:01, I can start my fire.
That's what it means. Until midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning.
That was a state regulation that the town adopted.
Okay.
So how do we fix that? Does that make any sense? It's way before me.
Well, is it still, is it still the state? Is that still a state?
Is it just us that have the state, or, you know, I didn't?
It's everybody.
All right, but these are rec, this refers to rec.
Recreational.
Just recreation.
This code was exactly.
So, March 15th to May 15th, you can't, oh, okay.
Without a permit. You can do it from those periods, other periods you need a permit. This is what, I didn't write this, this is current.
No, I know, I know, I know, I'm not shooting the messenger.
I know, it's kind of weird. It doesn't make any sense.
You know, also the Sunday.
Yes.
I was going to ask about that, too.
Um, why can't we burn on Sunday?
It's an old blue law.
From Memorial Day till Labor Day?
People are enjoying their yard, and then someone starts the smoke.
Right, but Memorial Day to Labor Day is when most people are outside with their little bonfires, it's summer.
They don't want people burning on Sundays because sometimes it's annoying to people, they got their windows open, the smoke comes in.
Yeah, but that's.
Why not Saturday?
I'm just telling you why they did that.
But this is the perfect time to do it.
But is this burning, or is this like fire pit?
These are fire pits.
No burning, period.
It says burning.
No, no burning.
But you mean fire pit.
Fire pit is different, I think.
If you're cooking food, that's not a problem.
No.
No, no.
But the recreation fires would be. That's burning.
Most people who have a little fire pits, you're saying on Sunday, you can't sit around your fire pit. No, not you don't, you know what I mean?
No, no, I.
That's not going to go over well. I, I don't like that at all.
The police are going to feel there, they're going to feel their genitals.
No, this means the fire pit.
Well, it's not defined, so you, I would assume, because it's not defined, it would mean anything that's in here.
Any kind of burning.
Well, I've been subjected to the burning in the barrel on Sunday, and I can't enjoy my, in the yard. It's just all the smoke.
Well, burning in the barrel, depending on what you're burning in the barrel, is a different story than sitting around your fire ring with a cup.
I don't know. I, I, I don't.
I don't, I particularly don't like this. It's the weekend, it's the summer months. I don't think we should restrict it.
I, I think, I don't agree.
I have a fire pit.
Well, then we should say fire pit's okay, but.
No, no, but if I notice it's too smoky, and I know it's going in my neighbor's yard.
Some people don't care.
Well, that's, some people don't care about a lot of things, but.
No, I, I think it's a bad idea.
But I think the people who do care, who are conscientious of the neighbors, should be punished for the people who are ignorant.
Correct. And, and a lot of people have fire pits.
A lot of people.
A lot of people.
I mean, I think that every house in my neighborhood has a fire pit.
Well, there is also a statement in here that downwind people can file a complaint. It's in here.
I know.
If the fire department responded to that and said, oh my God, they could order it extinguished. If it's a nuisance.
Well, if it's a nuisance. So if the fire department shows up at someone's house, and they have a burning barrel with a lot of debris that's causing a lot of smoke, well then that's okay. But, I mean, just a little fire pit where you're burning wood on a Sunday night, or.
We're not talking about a fire pit. It does say, this section should not be construed to prohibit grills for personal use.
But that's not what I'm talking about.
They're not grilling.
They're not grilling. This is just a little, maybe a lot of people have a little.
I've been subjected to terrible weekends. I'm not for the burning on Sunday.
So I would also add that, that's an old blue law. It's discriminatory. It's discriminatory. People who don't practice Christianity may have to do their yard work on Sundays. They don't do it on Saturdays. And so why can't they burn on their day off, not on their Sabbath?
You're absolutely right, Mike, but wouldn't that be a different kind of burning?
Hmm? Yeah.
We need a fire permit for that kind of burning.
Correct.
Right, so we're not restricting that to Sundays, are we?
Well, this says any burning.
Yeah, we might be.
I would say if you leave it up to the discretion of the fire department, when they get a call, and they go there, they'll determine if it's a nuisance or it's not a nuisance, and they will advise the party to put it out or say it's okay to burn. That's what I would say.
Yeah, I think Saturdays and Sundays, this is a, this is a, a community where people work Monday through Friday, so that's when you enjoy your fire pit or you do your yard work. Restricting it to only a Saturday, and like Mike says, it is a little bit discriminatory too, because some people, Sundays, that's when they do their work. So I don't agree with that part. So, I don't agree with that part, I don't think we should restrict it on Sundays. And, and you know, Donna, some people are sitting on their decks on Saturday and have a nuisance fire on the side of them, too. So, they need to call the police and say, there's black smoke coming towards us and, you know. But Saturdays will be just like Sundays, in my opinion.
Or Tuesdays.
Or Tuesdays.
May, may I suggest that Counselor Cook get, we tabled this and continue and have Counselor Cook get with the solicitor and, and work out? Because you have a lot of detail there that obviously we're not going to consider tonight.
Right, and I think.
We'll have another meeting, Donna, we'll meet with the fire chief, we'll go through this again.
But I think we don't.
I think it's important, just so you know, one of the things that I, I think that Ms. Cook, Mrs. Cook pointed out, we, we need to prohibit crash burning because we're going to, you're going to be closing the landfill. And so, we anticipated that there might some people decide to.
And there are people doing it right now.
Yeah, so. And so, this would be specific that we're not going to allow trash burning.
Yes.
Well, I, I did the best I could because I didn't get any help.
No, it's, we're ready.
No, no, this is a great start, Tom.
Just a couple of things, but I think that your problem is people were burning trash over there and burning stuff that was causing.
And construction.
And construction stuff, and, and it's.
Which is prohibitive, it prohibits that, yeah, we have to.
If it's that, I don't think that your problem was a family with a little fire pit just sitting around.
No.
No, so I think we need to.
I've had problems where people have piled it up and used a blowtorch.
Well, you told me.
And I, and I'm like, that sounds like something I've heard on TV, it sounds like a blowtorch, I look outside, it's a blowtorch.
Right, and I mean, that would bother me, too, if my neighbors had.
Oh, my God.
A huge fire that was a bonfire in the middle of a residential area with the houses as close as where you live.
Somebody would make suggestions now or by email?
Make a date to me with the fire chief and you'll go over the.
Yeah, I, I did mention to you that I wasn't getting any help, so.
From?
From, yeah.
You've got to say from my office, because I.
No.
No, that's not what she's doing.
Well, what I was going to say is, we don't want to make it so strict that the fire department are called all the time, like, they have other things to do.
They'll be really mad at it.
The honest answer is this ordinance is from nineteen sixty-seven, which is, makes it fifty-four years old, I guess.
Yeah.
So, it needs to be updated.
That was before the fire pits in the backyard, because everyone has them.
Yeah, but everybody had burner barrels back then, too.
They did.
So, while, so while we're.
We want to make suggestions.
Well, that's what I'm going to say, while we're still on the subject, does anyone else have suggestions?
Email to me and I'll make sure that Donna.
Is that what you want to do or?
It'd be easier if you might just put an email out to our house.
Okay. So, what I need a motion is to continue this public hearing until the next meeting, which is, or do you want me to do?
No, we'll do it both, because Donna wants to get it done.
So, our next meeting is.
Twenty-four.
Some, uh, someone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And thank, thank you, Donna, for at least addressing a nineteen sixty-five ordinance. We appreciate it. Sixty, Bistro Paris Incorporated DBA Le Moulin Rouge, fourteen oh three Main Road, request approval of the transfer of class BV liquor license from Le Moulin Rouge Incorporated to Bistro Paris Incorporated DBA Le Moulin Rouge, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Also attached is a letter from Paul J. Pisana Esquire. Hello? Let you into, why don't you guys sit down? I know Phil, but I don't know the.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Attorney Brenda Pinagio, I represent, my voice is a little, I'm a little ill, so I apologize, but I don't have COVID, so. I represent Philip Viveras, Mark Duque, and April Duque. They are the petitioners for the council looking for transfer of the beer and wine, the BV license from Le Moulin Rouge Inc. to Bistro Paris Inc. So, we're the applicant, I represent the applicants.
So, are you buying the move, which is very?
Yes.
Wow.
So, the, the application of the current owner is Marcel Duque, Duque Senior, Marcel Duque Junior is here as well. April Duque is also a family member and Phil Viveras is an investor in, as well, he's a co-owner of Bistro Paris Inc. So, we're seeking a, a transfer of that license, but we're looking for it to be from December first forward, not immediately. The, I, I do have a couple of things that I do need to supplement to the council in order for, for it to be ready. I know that I do need, I do still need to provide a certificate of good standing for the existing entity, the receiving entity, if approved. But I, I have submitted, I, I think everything that the council should be looking for relating to the BV license, and there's also a victualling license application that's on the agenda as well.
Okay, so, any questions? From the council?
Well, this is simply a transfer, somebody's ownership is transferring, they just want a transfer license.
Yep. And the liquor license, too, right?
So, so we transfer the liquor license?
So, what we're doing is we're transferring the liquor license and the victualling license, which is the next one, so that they can do their business. So, right now, we're just discussing the liquor license. My only concern, did you see the letter that's attached to this? MS Walker of Rhode Island.
Yes. Yes.
They'll take care of the closing.
Yes, yes, so I, I did reach out to the attorney and that would be paid directly to the vendor.
I didn't even know if we could withhold anything because of this.
They're just protecting their no requirement.
Okay, I was just asking, okay, thank you, thank you.
So, it's the same individuals except for maybe Phil?
No, no, their father owned it.
There's Marcel Duque Senior, who is, he's going to continue to be the owner of the real estate, he's.
The building.
Yes, and then there'll be a lease to Bistro Paris Inc.
Okay.
So, Bistro Paris is the new entity?
Yes, correct, DBA Le Moulin Rouge, I have to keep that, Dave, that's very popular.
It is, it is.
But it will be the same restaurant?
It is.
The same menu, the same?
Does it have a different name?
It's going to have the same.
Bistro?
That's just the name of the corporation.
Oh, I get it, okay.
We're not changing anything.
They're still going to have the cheese?
Yes. Except the father is retiring.
That's my favorite.
The children are taking over and Phil decided to invest in this, like he has nothing else to do.
And this is an indoor liquor license only, correct?
Yes.
And, and you said they're going to take care of the debt thing or this is?
I was just asking about that because we usually don't see that, so that's, I just wanted to make sure. All right, so, I'm going to entertain a motion for the liquor license transfer.
All right, I'll make a motion, the approval of victualling license, oh, wait a minute, we're doing B, right?
Yeah, yeah, the BV liquor license.
Request approval of, to approve the transfer of class BV liquor license from Le Moulin Rouge Inc. to Bistro Paris Inc. DBA Le Moulin Rouge, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Would you be effective December first?
December first.
To be effective, effective December first. Twenty twenty-two, is that what you were looking at?
No, no, I'm looking for a public hearing.
Oh, okay, so I have a second, now I'll open it up for public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, I know, I heard you. Anyone would like to comment? Anyone would like to comment? Like to close the public hearing? I have a motion.
I just want to make, specify that the license was for indoor service only, so, just want to make sure that's part of the motion.
Okay. And that's because of things we have going on.
Do I have to amend it or anything?
As long as it's understood, you could say that, that's part of the motion.
We'll just, is that all right if we add that?
It's consistent with the application, they only showed indoor service, but I just want to make it very clear.
Oh, I just thought it was understood, no?
I just want to make it clear for the record, it's indoor service, crystal clear.
And to make this crystal clear is for indoor service only.
Thank you, Donna. And Joe, you still second that?
Yes, second.
So, motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so the next one is Bistro Paris Incorporated DBA Le Moulin Rouge, fourteen oh three Main Road, request approval of victualling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Do I entertain a motion, please?
Move approval of the victualling license for Bistro Paris Inc. DBA Le Moulin Rouge, fourteen oh three Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion?
Effective twelve one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck, you're all staff.
Thank you so much, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, appointments, discussion and possible votes, interviews of municipal court judge, two candidates, the first one is Robert H. Humphrey Esquire. Hello?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight.
You're our current judge.
Excuse me?
You are the current judge.
I am the current judge, had the privilege of being the municipal court judge for the last four and a half years, before that, I also had the same position back in two thousand and three. I am a trial attorney, which I've been doing now for thirty years, handling both civil and criminal work. Also, for the last twenty-eight years, I've been practicing law here in the town of Tiverton. Now, as a municipal court judge, I, I strive to make the court a valuable asset for all the citizens of the town and also to ensure the fair administration of justice. The vast majority of the cases that come before the court are traffic violations, and for most of those people, this is their first time in court, so as a municipal court judge, I have the duty to instruct them as to judicial proceedings. We explain that if they plead guilty to the charges, the fine and the court costs are opposed, they plead not guilty, we have a trial at which the police officer comes and testifies, they get to then question the officer and present their own evidence, and then I render a judgment. Now, these trials at the municipal court are also valuable assets for the Tiverton police officers, because it's a much less stressful environment for them to practice and experience testifying in court, so they're better prepared for when they finally do have more serious charges before the district court and the superior court. And after each trial, I do speak with them about the trial and just tips that I have over the years I've learned doing trials. Now, also, many of the people who come before the court qualify to use a good driving record to have their charges dismissed, to qualify, who must have had a license for a minimum of three years, have no other traffic violations or surchargeable accidents. In those cases, upon payment of court costs, I think it's very important to understand that, they have to pay the court costs before these charges are dismissed. Now, I am grateful that I've had a strong working relationship with the Tiverton police, and for the past twenty-six years, I've made myself available at night on the weekends for them to come to my house to sign arrest warrants. Also, during the week, I sign arrest warrants for them, so they don't have to go down to Newport to see the Newport judge. One of the other things I said, I, I want this court to be a valuable asset for the citizens, and part of that's generating revenue, the other part's keeping the costs low. And I can tell you that today, in two thousand and twenty-two, I am still paid the same exact salary that I was paid in two thousand and three. So, think, what other cost in town, state, or federal government hasn't gone up one dollar in the last nineteen years? But I do it because I enjoy the work, I consider it an honor, and being here in town, it's convenient to go to the court, and it's public service. Now, moving on to, I think, what's become the top priority for the town and for the court, these are the ordinance violations. Over the last two years, we've had some great success in getting homeowners who are in violation of the ordinance to clean up their property at their expense, not at the town's expense. We had a property on Bismarck Avenue, which had junk vehicles and trash everywhere, and the owner has some health issues, so it took a little while, but eventually, at the owner's expense, that property was cleaned up in two thousand and twenty-one. More recently, we've had the Evergreen Avenue and Bear Den Road properties. With the help of the solicitor, we've been able to move those along. The town presented back in October two thousand and twenty-one a motion to default, which I granted at that time, and then in February, when the order was presented to me, I immediately signed it as well. So, I think that's a success. Another success we've had recently is the Fish Road property. With some cajoling from the court, the homeowner, at his own expense, did a great job of cleaning up the property, and as of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, the building official has informed us that the person is no longer in violation.
But how long was that like that? It was months, right?
I, I, I don't know with that property, I only know when they come before.
How long did it come to you?
As soon as it comes to me, we've been working on them, so, and as I said, it's an adversarial process, I need the homeowner, they, they have a right to be present, to be heard, and I also need the building official to be there to present the town side of this.
All right, so, so you brought that up at a meeting we had with you, and you were concerned about the absenteeism of our building official? Well, after that meeting, we did do some research, he was at every single court hearing except the two weeks that he had a health problem and wasn't able to attend. So, he did, as far as we can see, by pulling everything we had, he was there every single time.
Okay, the zoning ordinances do not come on before the court at every single court appearance, often it will be every third or fourth, and then when we do have the building official there, we can move forwards.
Well, I've talked to the building official and he feels he's there at any time you would need him, any time there was something coming, but that wasn't the impression you gave us the other night?
Right.
But, but we did look at the court, just to let you know, we did look at the court records, and he had been there when he needed to be.
Okay, well, we've tried to, we've had great successes in some of the further cases lately. When I've had the building official present, we have been able, we've had the, the case with the person who had the RV on undeveloped land, they were given two weeks, they didn't remove it, and because I had the building official present, I was able to fine them five hundred dollars a day and stated that if the town decides, the solicitor can send over an order.
Did you do that recently at the, your last meeting?
That was on October fourth.
Yeah, because that, that RV's been sitting there for a very long time.
Yeah, and I, and I hope you understand that we only meet twice a month.
I do understand.
And if, and if matters don't come before the court, there's nothing that we can do, but it is a top priority, it's one that, as you can see, especially with these latest cases, when everyone's working together, the council, the building official, solicitor, and the court, we're getting a lot done.
Right, any questions from the council?
Yeah, thank you, Bob, Judge, thank you for being here. I have one question I'll ask from both of you. How important is the town charter to you? How important is the town charter to you?
The town charter, with regards to the municipal court, it is not included in the enabling legislation which established the court. Municipal court is a court of limited jurisdiction. I did file a written decision back in 2019 that had a thorough analysis of it, and also cases from our Supreme Court that talked about courts can't expand their jurisdiction.
How important is the town charter to you?
I believe I've answered that.
No. You answered what's in it and what's not in it. How important is the town charter to you?
It is trumped by state law.
I understand that. How important are the provisions of the town charter to you?
Well, as an official for the town, obviously, it is important, as are the other ordinances.
Okay. So, are you bound, if there's something in the town charter that relates to the municipal court judge, is that judge bound by it?
As long as it's not contradicted by the enabling legislation. State law trumps the charter.
So, what about Section 1211a2 and B3?
It's in contrast to an earlier section of the charter, which only gives the municipal court the powers that are given to it through the state-enabling legislation. So, yes, there is a conflict. And as you can see, there's an inherent problem with the municipal court rendering political decisions which affect different parties, because the court is appointed by the council, and the council is a party to these political disputes.
So, a potential, an allegation of violation of the town charter is a political decision?
It is a political question.
All the time?
Least in the ones that I've been involved with.
I would disagree with you.
I'm just saying, it's beyond the jurisdiction of the court.
I think it's pretty clear that it's not.
And it is obviously a conflict for any judge to make that decision, be in violation of the judicial canon 3E1, that you can't have the appearance of being unfair, because obviously, the council appoints the judge.
I would say you were unfair to citizens when you said you weren't going to take up matters that were clear in here. I'll read, "In the event a sufficiently set forth complaint is against the majority of the town council members," the town, I'm sorry. The... B3. "The municipal court shall have jurisdiction to determine violations of the charter, town ordinances, and rules or regulations adopted under the authority hereof, and to enter appropriate orders, decrees, or judgments with respect to such violations." That seems pretty clear language to me.
Okay. But Section 805 of the town charter only gives the court jurisdiction in accordance with the enabling legislation. So, those two sections are in conflict.
Well, we'll have to get an opinion of that from a lawyer. But the only way that you would hear this, we, the town council hears charter complaints, except if it's against the town council, of course, and then it has to go somewhere. So, where do you suggest it go?
Superior court. There, the judges have lifetime tenure.
So, what you're really worried about is that you're going to, you're going to get certain town councils mad, and you won't get appointed?
No, not at all. It's just our legal systems based on the belief of an independent, fair judiciary. So, obviously, this would bring that into question for most reasonable people, that you can't obviously render a decision that's a political question involving the people that also appoint you.
Well, it's very interesting, it's been in the town charter for a very long time, and it's never been questioned. And we've had several lawyers, and we've had several charter commissions, and it's never, this has never come out until the question, until there was a complaint against the majority, well, one of the members of the town council. And that's where we weren't quite sure where to go with it after that.
And it may be something for the council to bring to your state rep, to have the enabling legislation changed, if they believe that that's appropriate.
Well, I think, first of all, we have to get a different, we have to get another interpretation from our town solicitor to see if what you're saying is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone? Everyone's all set? All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Fort. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Briefly introduce yourself and tell us your background and why you're interested in the municipal opposition.
To those of you that I haven't seen in a few years, it's good to see you again. The new people, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Michael Fort. I grew up in Little Compton. Participated in a number of Tiverton organizations when I was young. As I grew older, had to leave the area to go to college, go to law school. Graduated and came back to Rhode Island, was able to find a property at the right time in Cranston and settle down. I've been an attorney for almost 15 years now. My main practice areas are difficult to digest in a 10-second elevator speech. But I can leave it at, if it was screwed up, or somebody claimed it was screwed up, it landed on my desk. I represented attorneys who were sued for malpractice. I represented judges who were sued for civil rights complaints. I represented mayors, town counselors, zoning boards, and the like on a number of different civil rights procedural and other types of claims. And then, I got involved more in business litigation and ended up becoming appointed to take over businesses when there were shareholder disputes, and there was deadlock, or to protect the interests of creditors as a receiver. I also serve as an arbitrator and a mediator that could be either hired directly by the parties, appointed by the American Arbitration Association, or by members of the Superior Court itself. In 2021, I left my old law firm. I was provided an opportunity to begin teaching at the college level on a more full-time basis. I took that opportunity. I am now an assistant professor of accounting and business law at Nichols College. And while that gave me a great opportunity to move in one direction, I also opened my own law practice in the time I had on the side in Warwick with two partners. And it is a general practice, mostly focusing on civil side of the ledger, with a bit of a business bend based upon my background and interests. In 2018, I was put in the mix for consideration to become municipal court judge in Cranston. And I was appointed in 2019 when the new council took over. In 2021, I was then elevated to the number-two position on that court as the senior associate judge. Like the enabling legislation that was referred to a few minutes ago, the enabling legislation for Cranston is very similar to the statute that was passed that created the Tiverton Municipal Court. Housing, traffic, ordinance violations, and the like. My main focus for the past two and a half years on that court has been handling the more complex cases that come across the docket. Many of the housing cases, whether they're minimum housing, violations, zoning, but there are also traffic trials that end up in front of me. It's always nice to come home. There was an opportunity that I was made aware of to apply. I put my application in. I think that I have the skill set, as has been shown by what I've done in Cranston so far, and also by the experience I have. I did provide a resume to the town administrator, which I believe was distributed to the group. You have a partial list of some of the things I've been up to and some of the cases I've been involved in. This is not something I take lightly. There were a number of things that Judge Humphrey said at the beginning, which I agree with. There are a number of people who, this is their first interaction with the court system. They are unfamiliar with how it works and will say agitated when they walk through the door. And while we want to get to the right and just result and do it as efficiently as possible, there are a couple of concerns, and we have to multitask them as we are going through this. The first one is, do they understand what's going on? Can they actually participate in the process? How severe is the charge that's being levied at them? What do the rules require for that process? And as Judge Humphrey described, there is a particular set of procedures that are required in traffic cases under the rules promulgated by the traffic tribunal. And it's standard that you explain what the plea options are, that there's a good driver statute capability, and the like. And at the end of the day, if the case can be disposed of quickly, efficiently, and amicably, that's great. If not, everybody gets their day in court, and we have a trial. And then, if somebody doesn't like it, they can take it on from there. It's a similar process, but different rules that apply to the housing cases and the ordinance violations. And that's because they're less standardized. They're less routine, they're more subject to some changes coming in. And the experience I have in Cranston is that the solicitor's office is in more control of those cases, which I think is a little bit different from how things have worked here historically. But as part of professionalizing the process and making things more predictable for people, I'm sure that we can have a discussion, if I'm appointed, to go forward on how to streamline things and make it happen more regularly. I think one of the biggest concerns the court has to have is the enforceability of its decisions. It can't just sit there to render an opinion and hope that everybody's going to just say, okay, we'll follow it. That's not the way the process always works. A lot of the time, it is. And when people have confidence in both the fairness and the adequacy of the system, they will comply. But it's also because the court has the ability to make them comply in the event that somebody decides that they don't want to participate voluntarily. And those options exist in the law and in the statute as well. And knowing that that exists has to be made available and aware and occasionally used in order to ensure that people do follow the process through and that the laws passed by the council or the state are actually honored. It's not something we want to do, it's not something we come out looking to do, but it is something that is at the back of the mind of the system, that, look, at the end of the day, it's not just a decision, it's an enforceable decision. Now, I heard Counselor Burke's question before. And I'm going to answer it with a very simple response, I hope. If there's a case that comes in front of the court that the court shouldn't be hearing, then the court rules against somebody, and they have a right of appeal. It's not something that just gets buried. One of the worst things that happens on a docket is that a case languishes. When I took over the housing calendar roughly in 2020, there's one case I can think of that had been on the case since the time I was in high school.
We can find you a case like that.
That's a problem. That's a problem. And you know what? At some point, either it's going to be resolved or it's not. And there are processes and procedures that can be utilized to get a case to its terminal point. And sometimes, the defendant wins, and sometimes, the plaintiff or the prosecution wins. But at the end of the day, you need a decision. A no decision, as an attorney, is more frustrating sometimes than losing a case. Because what's the court there for? It's not to look nice in a black fancy cape. You're hired to make a decision. And at the end of the day, if you're not able or willing to make a decision, and I do not make that accusation of Attorney Humphrey by any stretch, this is something I've experienced in my frustration dealing in other courts. But it's a reality that participants in the court process are there to have a result. Now, if they can settle it, that's great. Even Lincoln said, "The best case is a settled case," right? Everybody leaves a little happy, everybody leaves a little angry. Solicitor Marcelo can tell you more times than I can how that works out. But at the end of the day, if a case needs judicial resolution, that requires a decision, and we can't be afraid of making a mistake. That's what the appeals process is for.
I think the community wants a decision too. And a lot of times, when decisions aren't made, and these properties just languish, and they get worse, or they don't change, then we get accused of, well, why isn't something being done?
Or worse, they resort to street justice.
Well, or other property owners say, well, if they can do it, we can do it. And then, it just multiplies and multiplies.
And that's the breakdown of the law that I described before. I mean, I don't have to explain to you, because you've lived with the experience of having some of these things come to you. And you know something? The city council in Cranston has the same thing. I have a very complex case that I've been dealing with. It's got a 2018 number on it, it deals with a cemetery. It's been in and out of the news. And one of the issues is, how do you hold a cemetery responsible? It can't be sold. Put a lien on it, that's great, you know? And what we eventually were able to do was, and I entered this order two weeks ago. Number one, there was an issue with the trustee that had to get dealt with in Superior Court. That was beyond the municipal court's jurisdiction. So, there was a period of time where our hands were tied. But when it came back, then the answer was, all right, if the owner's not willing to do it, there is the power of the court to appoint a special master or appoint somebody to take it over and develop a plan to actually reform it. And that's just knowing the options that exist and being able to utilize the tools in the toolbox to try to get the case advanced at the right point in time. And you don't get that but through any method other than experience, reading the rules, and litigating in tough cases.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Just have a question. I see you have a dissertation on impact of public pension risk taking.
My favorite topic as I'm reading tonight.
I was just, I was just, I was just wondering if, why you would pick that?
So...
Because it's his favorite topic.
I thought I'd probably fall asleep on the desk.
Well, you will, reading it. In 2011, there was a little case that was filed in the city of Providence involving the retirees who had a little bit of an issue because the city wanted to reduce its pensions, because it claimed it was going to go into bankruptcy. I was class counsel for the retirees in that case. I was also involved in the state pension litigation, as well as three or four other cities and towns. And let's just say, having lived through the process, as will become, I hope, readily apparent in the 100 pages when it gets published next May or August, whenever it comes out, I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect between the myth of how things are supposed to work versus the reality of how they do. And how that impacts investment portfolios, how that impacts the funding of a plan. Those things are all interrelated.
It is a big expense for towns and cities nationally. And I don't think we fully understand the impact of the, of the way it rolls along like a tumbleweed, and all of a sudden, you know, you might have 23 employees, but you have 100 that you're paying for. And I don't think we truly understand what it does to the future.
And the claim not to interrupt you is whether or not there's a risk transfer. And without boring everybody, the question is, are you dealing with the expenses as they go on on an actuarial basis, or is some of the liability pushed on to future generations? And that's one of the things that they're looked at.
Right. It'd be interesting to be schooled in that, because it's, I think people don't understand it, so they, you don't talk about it, really. You just go on to the next. It's kind of, it's complicated to me. I just understand the very rudimentary pinning of it, but it's very interesting. And why, why did you just, I mean, it's, what is it, $10,000? It's truly just a civic...
Yeah, it's not, it's not the money, that's certainly for sure. I mean, I can, I have other ways of making that money very quickly. I think it's giving back to the community. And as I said at the beginning, I mean, when you talk about the Sakana and the Casa Peninsula, I mean, there's a lot of overlap between these two towns. And, you know, I played Tiverton soccer, I played Tiverton baseball, I went, you want to go? When I was really young, I went to a small school on East Road before I ended up in the public school in Little Compton. So, there is an element of wanting to give back to your community that I think is inherent in anybody who will step up to the plate, because, you know what? I think, as you all know, you do not win 100% friendship with any of the decisions you make. And, you know, not to get off into other things, I mean, I started as a soccer referee here in Tiverton before climbing the ladder. I mean, I've been in high-pressure situations with decision-making, getting chased off the field in all kinds of different places all over the country.
You were on the school board in, no?
I was on the budget committee.
The budget committee in Little Compton, when I was on the school board.
In Tiverton, that is correct. So, I get the win-loss ratio, I guess is the best way I can phrase it. But it's not, I put in for the job, I would like to do the job, I think I can do the job well. As for why I'm crazy enough to step up to the plate, I just have been imbued with the view that you give back to the community from the time I was very young, and some of the people here know why that's the case.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you for your initial response to my question. I just have a follow-up. Two follow-ups. One, would you consider allegations of violations of the charter to be political?
The person making them may have a political aim, but if the formulation of them is purely legal, then it's a legal question that could be presented to a court. There is one other thing I would like to respond to. If there was that much of a concern that it, there is an appearance of impropriety, there are two ethics advisory panels that could weigh in on that. The first one is the Ethics Commission itself. And the second one is, there's actually an ethics advisory panel applicable to lawyers and judges who could render an opinion on that. And while the idea of a part-time-appointed judge is very strange in federal land and at the state level, we have elected judges all over the country. So, the idea that a judge, without getting into some of the other political issues that attach to this these days, could have one foot in politics and one foot in decision... attach to this these days, could have one foot in politics and one foot in decision-making, it's a little bit foreign to us, but it's not foreign in the law.
And your question also answered my second, my father, other follow-up, so thank you about the ethics. Thank you.
Just real quick, and you're still doing soccer, as I understand it.
I would love to. I have reasons that keep me off the field these days because I, some of the younger people seem to get faster and I don't, and I don't want to take away from the game.
I totally get it, I get it. So in Cranston, there's a senior associate judge and an associate judge?
There's a chief judge, a senior associate, and then a number of associate judges underneath.
So is that because there are just so many more cases than we have?
Yes. So the way it works is, the court meets a week on and a week off in rotation. So it's essentially, if every month is roughly four weeks, they meet two weeks every month, every day. And some days, there's a morning session, and some days, there's an evening session. So you could have both sessions. So we have people, we cover one of those sessions. So my session for the last little bit has been the Friday morning session. But there's somebody else that's covering Monday morning, somebody else covers Monday afternoon, on and on and on, to cover the whole week.
And you still have cases from 19, 2018?
Not traffic, thankfully.
And you will have time for this, it won't conflict with.
Yeah. Yeah, the only, the only concern that I had expressed to Mr. Carter when I had initially reached out was the current time block may be a little bit of an issue because I have some activity at the State House that could conflict on that particular day. But as far as I know, there's no legal requirement that it be specific to a Tuesday afternoon.
No.
So assuming that we could work out a schedule and arrangement that works for Police Department, the Housing Department, and me, which I don't anticipate there being too much of an issue with, that I think we can get through that issue.
And it's only certain months, right? It's May through, no, or is it?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
January through.
January through, hopefully the end of June.
You're right, I'm sorry, I was thinking of a conversation, okay. All right, any other questions for Attorney Ford? Thank you.
Thank you all.
So. The question is, would someone like to make a motion?
I will. With, with all respect to our current judge, and I certainly appreciate what you've put in and the work you've done for the town, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Michael B. Fort Junior Esquire to the position of municipal court judge.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Oh, no, we don't have to waive a policy because the policy is only for commission, I think, commissions. Yeah, it's only for boards and commissions. I mean, if you'd like me to waive, if I could, but I don't think I have to, I've never had to. Okay. So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? You're unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Humphrey, for your service to Tiverton.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. General business, Deb Haig, Harbor Commission discussion regarding the request to have Town Council assist with recording of Harbor Commission meetings. Hi, Deb.
Hi. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
When I joined the Harbor Commission last August, we were still straddling the fence of being able to have Zoom meetings. And as those were no longer possible, I was approached by quite a few Tiverton residents wishing to continue having the meetings recorded. Counselor Edwards and I had a couple email correspondence about it. It looked promising, but like so many things do, it just kind of fizzled out. At the last Harbor Commission meeting, we had a discussion about how beneficial it would be to have our meetings recorded. It was the consensus of the members present that recording the meetings would provide a public service and aid in keeping a more detailed record. We are working on the Harbor Management Plan, as you know, we took a little break over the summer, but we're geared up and re-engaged and really looking to really complete it and follow through in the approval process over the next year. And in doing so, those of us who have the resources and the time to devote to minutes would like to focus our energies on getting the Harbor Management Plan done. I believe that recording the meetings, you know, would really help keep an adequate public record, adequate being the key word.
You'd still have to do minutes.
We'd still have to do minutes, but the recording would supplement and, you know.
So would you like them televised the way that?
I think that we would, yes, and I think that the residents would appreciate that as well. It would allow people who aren't able to attend the meetings because of a commute or other reasons to participate in a way that they're not able to now.
And you meet once a month?
We meet once a month, and we actually moved our regular meeting date and time so that we could be at Town Hall for the recordings.
Now, the agenda doesn't say possible vote, so we can't.
I'll have to come back.
No, we would just need to put it on another agenda.
I personally think it's a very good idea that every meeting of all the commissions should get done. Sometimes the problem is we don't have the availability of the camera people, but, but we have worked it out with, I think we do it with the planning board now, zoning now, and. We do it with budget. This could definitely come out of the council contingency, and maybe when we do the new budget, we could just put it in your budget. For the video. I don't know if anyone has any objection?
Not at all, I think it's an excellent idea. I think there's so many things going on with the Harbor Commission right now that people just don't know. And it's kind of advertising, it might get people more involved, and people have a lot of questions about a lot of different topics that you address in the Harbor Commission. So I think it's an excellent idea.
So Deb, what I'll do is I'll put it in the next meeting, we'll get an approximate cost, because we will have an idea because we know what it, right? We know what.
We're going to have to find out if he can do it, that's.
Right, but, but sometimes they can find other people to, other people to do it.
Keep in mind also, it's part of Chris's plan to get the Town Hall into the 21st century.
Right.
So this might be a stopgap until that happens.
Well, why don't we put it on the next agenda? And the way we'll do it is, whenever possible, whenever we can get someone there.
I'll find out from the current fund, is whether or not they're kind of, tolerate those dates.
Find out what the cost would be, and I think we could definitely take it from the council contingency. And like I said, when the new budget is drawn up, we'll just stick it in your budget.
Okay, great, fantastic.
You really don't have to come back.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll just discuss it then and vote on it.
Okay.
But thank you, and I do think it's a great idea. I think every commission should be doing it, but it's the availability, but we'll work on it.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. You guys have a great night.
Police Chief Jones, discussion, he wants another car, discussion. Did you hear me?
All in good time.
Yeah, yeah.
All in good time.
Yeah, yeah, I bet you respond to a lot of things too. Police Chief Jones, discussion, possible vote to review and adopt the resolution to allow police departments to collaborate with non-adjacent, all of a sudden, I can't say that word, adjacent municipalities and police departments under Rhode Island General Law 4542-2.
So after recent legislation, I've been collaborating with the town solicitor regarding the state law that allows your police departments to interact under non-emergency situations with other municipalities. The way or the previous law was only the mutual aid pack would work for emergency situations. This actually was presented by Chief Lynch in Bristol because he requires help for the Fourth of July parade. And historically, we would provide help, but we would, there was an issue with the police departments providing help and whether they'd be covered by the town of Bristol or they'd be covered by the municipality that they work full-time. So with this enabling legislation, it would assist not only the town of Bristol, but any other police department, including our own, if we required help on a non-emergency situation. So I'm asking the council, and I know I collaborated with Mr. Marcello, to approve this so I can communicate it to the Police Chiefs Association, so now every single police department and entity has this non-emergency mutual aid pack.
And this would be for details and other things?
That is correct, ma'am.
And they could also do the casino details or whatever.
So it wouldn't go that far, right? So this would be under like a.
Fourth of July parade.
Correct, correct. But under normal day-to-day operations, no.
Okay.
Only for emergencies, heaven forbid, obviously, everybody's coming. But if there was a special event or something specific that the president came to town and we needed traffic details, something like that, something that was an anomaly, but we required help, that we could ask any municipality for that assistance and they would come and they would be covered, heaven forbid somebody got hurt.
They'd be covered under.
State law.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't go outside the state?
No, no.
So Paul Rever and Westport?
That is correct, they wouldn't be eligible.
I have a question, yes. How does that impact your contract?
This is state law, so it supersedes the contract.
Okay. Would it be mentioned in the contract at all?
I wouldn't, and I wouldn't advise you to. I would look at this as a, this is a.
I'm just asking.
No, 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 ma'am, this, it's a good question. It's just, this is an operational and a policy decision that's made by the council to the police department.
Yeah. Yeah, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't want it to go anywhere near.
So who's paying for what? Like, if you go to Bristol, like, that's just.
Under the Bristol example, Bristol would pay.
Yeah.
Bristol would pay.
That's correct.
And if they come over to help us, we would pay.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, this wouldn't be happening a great deal.
No. This is just for special events that they feel they need reinforced.
And what ended up happening, just on a little aside, with the staffing issues that are facing everybody, and the trust kind of weighed in on this because the chief was asking for help, and then someone got hurt, and then there was kind of an issue on who was going to be responsible for that officer getting hurt, the original municipality or Bristol, and without the enabling legislation, it was gray. So, and then police departments just, because we used to send officers to help in the Bristol Fourth of July parade, and then we stopped doing it. So now with this, our officers are covered and so is the towns.
So the trust covers us if they're in Bristol and they get hurt?
If they're acting under Bristol's authority, they get covered by Bristol and under the trust.
Yeah, I do the trust. I mean, any other, yeah, Lee?
Just for the solicitor, so to me, the way this paragraph A reads is we would actually have to enter into or adopt a resolution with each city and town. Am I reading that wrong?
Upon the adoption of a resolution by the town, you enter into the agreement. So it just, it just gives you the authority to do so.
So it's a general.
It's a general resolution saying that we adopt the law and we agree to, by, by, that's how the city council is doing it. Cranston's one of the last to do this, I think, right?
There's a few more, but the deadline was October, so.
I think it's a good idea, I just.
It really comes out of the, the need to have police departments available, especially after COVID, to do non-emergency events, right? So like Citroen Art Festival, you might need cops to go, go to hang out there, or you might need someone to do, you know, your big farmers market. So it just gives you the opportunity to collaborate with other departments. It used to be only adjacent, now it's everybody. And adjacent was only for emergencies or law enforcement.
So they could go to Narragansett.
They could go anywhere, but they got, yeah, right.
In Rhode Island.
In Rust, only limits around municipalities.
Statewide.
Statewide.
We don't need to read this, this is already a.
Any other question? Any other questions? I tend to take a motion.
I'll second.
Or do we got to read it?
So the motion is to, to adopt a resolution to allow police departments to collaborate with non-adjacent municipalities and police, and police departments under Rhode Island General Law 4542-2. So I have a second? Donna, did you second it?
Yes, she did.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, it's your turn, it's second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does a car come with it?
Yeah, they're going to bring their own cars until we have to buy one.
We're not sharing.
Going to be another reason to buy a car, I know it. Town clerk, discussion impossible vote on funding for the voter information guide in and out, not to exceed 5,200 for printing and mailing, we all have a copy of that. I also looked at it earlier because I.
It was based upon prior voter information guides over the years with charter amendments and the like. The, actually, the printing costs for the, is the same as the last booklet that went out. $2,380 for printing, the mailing, including tabs and postage. We received the bill today, it's $6,000, sorry, $6,000, $2,644.99. So what we need for a total is $4,948.99.
But you would like us to vote for not to exceed 5,200 in cases and override, and it?
You can.
I think that's, yeah.
We expect the mailing to go out and, over the next five days, so that it's in time for October 19th, when early voting starts.
Any questions for Joan? I'd like to.
Question? It's more, it's more for. You look to your right all the time. More question, well, it's more a statement, but I want to draw my memory. So if we did not put this on the ballot, the, I'm sorry, the cannabis question, if we did not put the cannabis question on the ballot, it would mean that it could, the state could issue a license in Tiverton and we still would not get any revenue?
No, you would get the revenue.
You would get the revenue, okay. But we'd have no, no control over whether or not we wanted them in town.
Correct.
Voters wanted them in town, okay.
And that's why it's in the ballot.
Right, and I think that's important to know.
And as soon as you adopted that, as soon as you adopted that question, to put the question on the ballot, DBR was prevented from even considering applications until such a time as the amendment was decided.
So I think that's important for the voters to know that this was put on the ballot for that purpose. Thank you.
Thirty-three.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve not to exceed $5,200 for the printing and mailing of the voter information guide presented to us.
Do we have to say where we're taking it from?
I don't.
You'll figure it out, okay.
No, it, I need it in a motion, and I had talked to you, it would come out of council contingency.
From council contingency, from council contingency.
Needed that to come up, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in, double seconded, but it's Deb's turn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, thank you.
Good work. Counselor, Vice President Bur, discussion possible vote to food funding to advertise public hearing on 11/14/2022 regarding the draft zoning ordinance and short-term rental. I'd just like to say something because there's been a lot of concern over my phone this weekend. This is just to go out for the public hearing. No decisions being made tonight, no decisions have been made on any of these drafts. Once it goes out, that's what a public hearing is for. Everybody gets to come, voice their opinion, and then the council will take those opinions with, with, of course, input from the public and go further with that. But no, this does not mean that any of these drafts are approved by us, we are going out to public to get public opinion. Everyone's welcome to come, everyone will be able to speak.
And because these are both zoning amendments, they have to be follow state law, so it's three consecutive advertised.
Right, so.
Before the public hearing, so that's why we're doing it a little differently.
Right, these public hearings won't be for three weeks.
At least three weeks.
At least. So go ahead, I'm sorry, Mike, I just wanted to make that clear.
So I want to take ownership because I thought when we voted to send it to the planning board, we had also voted to schedule a hearing, and I look back and we did not. And I think that's the meeting that you were not at, and I, I think, yeah, but anyway.
I wasn't referring to you.
No, 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 I know, I know, I know, I know. My turn. So I take responsibility for that as well as we didn't have the language in the solar ordinance. I would say though, as, as we go forward with any draft zoning ordinances, I have of the opinion that we must follow the, out the timelines in state law, which is that when we send it on to, excuse me, the planning board, planning board has 45 days to render planning board has 45 days to render us an opinion, a detailed opinion based on what's in the law. And we have 60 days from that same date to hold our public hearing. So I just ask that in the future, we follow that. And I know this was an oversight, but.
Ms.
And like I said, the planning board is going to give us an opinion. They already have it written.
Well.
So I move approval.
Yeah, we don't have it. We don't have that opinion?
No, they voted. They discussed it. They have an opinion. It was done Tuesday night. They are gonna write it up and get it to us. We, the planner is doing that. I asked them to get it to us, but as soon as possible, but it'll also be part of the public hearing document. That's what the planning board.
Do you know why we don't have it? Because they just met.
Because they have to write it up.
And they have to write it up.
And it's before, we'll get it before the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll get it before the public hearing.
So when, when did they meet?
They canceled. What happened was a meeting had to be canceled or they would have rented the opinion sooner. But they had to cancel a meeting, so, so there was a delay.
It was a notice, it was a notice posting issue that we had to.
It wasn't posted correctly?
It was a Secretary of State posting issue.
I thought they voted unanimously not to pass this on until they reviewed it.
They did review it.
They did review it.
They did review it. They wrote their opinion. Well, they stated their opinion.
They haven't given it to us yet.
It's being written up and it's gonna come to us before, and that'll be part of the whole public hearing thing too.
So can we continue it until we get the results of their hearing?
No, so by state law, we're actually required to do them almost simultaneously. We have to give them 45 days and us 60 days.
We need the public hearing. We'll get it to you. I asked the planner to give it to me as soon as possible. We can email it to you way prior to the public hearing so that you can all review it, and we'll discuss it publicly because everything has to be discussed publicly.
Is there an?
Can I make a comment on all this?
Well, wait a minute, they're still talking. Go ahead.
I'll defer to.
Okay.
He's in liaison.
All we're asking is that we go out.
I understand that. And I understand the time clock. But part of that time clock is says the provisions of this section pertaining to deadlines shall not be construed to apply to any extension consented to by an applicant. The council is the applicant. Now, we have, we do not have in our hands the planning board's decisions on either of these ordinances, even though we sat there and listened to what they had to say. We have heard a lot of public comment here and at the planning board meeting that found a lot of problems with the SGR ordinance. Based on that, I think we should not advertise for a public hearing because it is entirely possible that once we all read it, read what the planning board had to say, we may think or decide, you know what? These things need to be gone through again. They need improvement, whatever the case may be. So why would we waste the time and effort and money on advertising if that could happen?
Because then we will do whatever we need to do. Then we'll have the public hearing, get a whole bunch of new ideas. I think people are missing what a public hearing is supposed to be. We are not making any decisions whatsoever. We have a draft ordinance. Now we hear from the public. We get the planning board's decision. Three weeks from now, we don't have to make decisions. We can keep continuing it. But at that point, we have all the information gathering. We have the planning board's decision. We have people coming to speak to us. Because regardless of what people said to the planning board, some of us were not there, and I think it's only fair that the seven of us hear it together, ask questions to these people that are coming up to us. And I don't think it's fair that, that certain people know certain things. That's what the public hearing is for. It doesn't mean we make a decision in three weeks. Three weeks from now, we hear everything and we may decide to rewrite it. We may decide to have a committee look at it. But I think it's important that we get all the public opinion we can and then go from there. That's what a public hearing is all about, is hearing what the public wants.
Why can't we have a subcommittee form now rather than go through all of this?
Well, because wouldn't it be helpful to the subcommittee if they hear the, what the public wants? Of course it would be if they hear the planning board. I think it would be, and then the council would have some importance in this too. Yes.
So the planning board statutory only makes an advisory opinion. It's not a decision. They don't get to.
But we don't even have it.
Yeah, so.
But we will have it.
And their, and their goal is to, and their, their job is to determine whether they believe that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and other couple elements. The council is not bound by their opinion. They, they could, you could ignore, you could accept it, you could do whatever you want with it. You will have an opinion from them, however. I think we've heard a little bit what it was.
Yeah, it's coming. I talked to them. It'll be.
I understand that they, they did, they found, based upon the testimony we heard tonight and talking to Todd Romano from my office, that they did have some concerns about it. Which consists, what their belief is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but it's, I mean, again, that's, I'm hoping that it's gonna be thorough enough that we'll be able to look at it and say whether or not, you know, we believe they're accurate, or number two, how we could make the ordinance better based upon their comments, so. But they're not the BN, and then all, only the council can pass the zoning ordinance, so.
And the transparency of it is the public gets to give us the opinion. And then if we do have a sub group, the network is, they've heard the opinion of the public.
So just so, just so, so the, the only purpose of tonight is to just advertise it for three consecutive weeks so that you have an opportunity to have a public hearing. At the end of that public, that public hearing, all this will be part of the record. There's only the planning board's recommendations, the public's comments, whatever else. I know we've gotten stuff submitted to us, emails up to this point. That'll all be part of the public record. At that, at the conclusion of that public hearing, you may decide, hey, yeah, you're right, we need more work on this. We don't like this, or whatever. Maybe we want to put a subcommittee of the council to review it more, but at least it moves the process forward. Otherwise, we're gonna keep on.
We have to move it forward.
There were a number of speakers at the planning board last week, and there was the planning board themselves, so the planner was going to compile all of that information and get that to us, but they only met last week.
But it shouldn't delay the pub, going out for three weeks.
No, because we'll get that.
We'll have it. Well, I talked to the office. We're gonna get it within the next couple of days. And we will send it to all of you and be part of the documents at the public hearing also. I think the more, I think the public needs to be heard at a public hearing. And then if we do do a separate committee, at least we have heard it, we've compiled everyone's thoughts, and it'll move the process forward.
And we do have, we have some interest in the public to be on a subcommittee.
So a couple of things. One is, any statement I made had nothing to do with the planning board not doing what they needed to do. They've done what they need to do. There was a glitch in the scheduling. They did what they needed to do. Second, though, is the, there may have been people who wanted to go to the planning board meeting last Tuesday night but did not because of a religious holiday. So they did not have the opportunity to present any opinion they may have had at that meeting. And third, right now, we must remember that we are allowing, tacitly allowing, short-term rentals to operate in violation of zoning. There is no provision in zoning to allow short-term rentals, so I think it behooves us to move this along as prudently and rapidly as possible. That doesn't mean that on the 14th, if we pass this motion, that we have to finalize it that night or even within that month. But I think we need to keep this moving along.
As long as it's moving the process.
So there would be an opportunity at that time with everyone saying and having the hearing that you might feel that it's just so overwhelming that you'd need a subcommittee at that time?
We did that with the SOA.
Okay.
We did that with the SOA. All right, so I didn't take a motion to advertise for the public hearing on November 14th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Edwards, very similar. This is gonna be quite the night. Discussion impossible vote to approve funding to advertise public hearing on 11/14/2022 for the zoning ordinance on SOA Energy Systems. Is there any discussion? I identitated a motion.
Moved. Go ahead, Deb.
Second.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Next thing is me, Counselor President DiMadera's, discussion possible vote to cancel the December 27th, 2022 council meeting. We historically have always canceled this meeting. A lot of councils are out.
So moved.
Second, second.
Joe's right with this one. All right, so Joe made the motion to cancel the December 22nd meeting. Deb, second in it. I'm gonna be around. All those in favor?
So we can change someone?
Town administrator, discussion possible vote to approve the nomination to William Bailey, the third Tiverton Fire Chief, as recommended by the town council at this, I'd like to table this until we go into executive session. Then we'll come out and do that, and do what we need to do on that item. Okay, I identitated a motion to go into executive session. Town administrator, Rhode Island General Law 4245, 45581, personnel perspective, candidate evaluation of employment history, character and fitness, be guided in the fifth Fire Chief vacancy. Notice given. Item 10B, town solicitor, Rhode Island General Law 4246582, general update on pending litigation. Our executive session, Tennessee, Councilor President DiMadera's, Rhode Island General Law 4246582, municipal court litigation regarding town Tiverton V Longflex LLC case 2220001.
So moved, yes.
Joe?
Say yes.
Okay, yes.
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 I'm taking like a five minute. So we can stretch.